And when they pray in their congregations. Before we hear from members of the Stillwater community and their calls for needed gun reforms, let's take a moment of silence to remember the lives of Harper and Fletcher, who died during their school mass at Annunciation Church and School on August 27th. And may we also hold in our hearts the eighteen children and three adults who were wounded during the shooting. May we carry the hopeful light of the Annunciation community with us as we work to build a Minnesota where all children are safe. It is now my honor to introduce the Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Ted Kozlowski, who has been and continues to be a vocal champion for children and who has courageously and passionately advocated for gun violence prevention measures that will transform the fabric of our communities. Thank you, Mayor Kozlowski.
Thank you, everybody, for being here today. Can you all hear me okay? I've got to say it was a... It's tough to be here in times of tragedy, when we need change. It's not lost on me when we go to social media. We see all the hate and vitriol whenever when anybody talks about gun control or trying to make a change. It's really hard for organizers, elected officials, I just have to say, to be up here to do this. Some of the comments I've seen online after the surgeons that worked on the victims of the Annunciation massacre came out and spoke against trying to make some change and get better gun safety laws in Minnesota. And the vile comments that I read were just completely unacceptable and didn't seem like anything that had any place in Minnesota, in humanity frankly. So I just want to encourage people to keep doing what they're doing and keep fighting through all of that. Because that's awful. I've never seen anything like it. And these tragedies, I feel, need to bring out the best in us and unfortunately, we're at a time in our country where it seems to bring out the worst. So with that, I'm Mayor Ted Kozlowski. I want to thank everybody for coming out this afternoon. As the mayor, your first job, as any mayor, is public safety. It's always been a priority of mine, it's always the top priority. It's not a political thing. I'm not a political officer. I don't have a letter next to my name. It can't be political. And I'm proud that we've got the best public safety people in the state, certainly the metro. And it's something I'm also very proud of, is our public safety team here in Stillwater. And it's one of those things that I absolutely love about living in Stillwater, is the fact that I feel safe here. It's a big part of our community and I think why a lot of us call it home. When I was first elected, over a decade ago at this point, the idea of a mass shooting happening in Stillwater was really very far from my mind. I did not think that was something that could happen here. Ten years ago, I was dropping my kids off, they're here today, at Stonebridge Elementary, where I also attended school. And it never crossed my mind that I'd have to worry about my kids being safe, or anything but safe. I was more worried, considering the type of student I was, I was frankly more worried for their teachers than of anybody's safety. But they turned out amazing, they were great students. But since I've dropped my kids off over a decade ago, there have been literally hundreds of mass shootings across our country. And now unfortunately, in our own state, in our own metro. And it's getting closer to home. When I used to think it wouldn't happen here, it's starting to feel more like when versus if. And frankly, that's just not something I can live with. So, you know, my heart obviously broke for the Annunciation community and the friends and families of the victims. I never want to be in the position of my friend, Mayor Frye, in having to speak with the grieving families after such a tragedy. But unfortunately, that's no longer unimaginable for me. We have to act, we have to keep our kids safe. It should be obvious. It shouldn't be political. I also want to be honest with everyone here today. I'm a gun owner. We have handguns, shotguns, and rifles at our house. For sport and protection, I respect the Second Amendment. But with those rights also comes responsibility. And I think it's responsible and absolutely necessary to have a conversation about these types of guns and capacity and what place they have in our society. Under current Minnesota law, cities like Stillwater can't ban guns in any public places. Think about where we're standing now. Right now, it's perfectly legal for someone to sit on that swing with an AR-15 or a .30 .6 slung over their shoulder, so long as they have a permit to carry. This also applies to Teddy Bear Park. It applies to our library. It applies to our Rex Center. It applies to our hockey rinks. If someone can please explain to me why it's legal to have an AR-15 at Teddy Bear Park, I'm all ears. Because it doesn't make any sense. It just simply has no place in Stillwater. Sorry. Further, as a community, we don't have the authority to even have a local conversation and make our own decisions on whether or not we want people marching down Main Street with AR-15s. If you remember, we had a demonstration a couple of years ago and people carried AR-15s down Main Street in Stillwater. We've got to figure out a way, we need the authority, I'm asking the state legislature and the governor to give the cities the authority to ban these guns and have these conversations locally, where we can make the decisions on where we want these things. As a business owner, as a property owner, I can decide if I want guns in my business. But as a mayor and a councilman in a community, we can't say we don't want AR-15s at Teddy Bear Park. It seems just absolutely idiotic to me. The good news is for all of us, is that we've had these conversations in our country before. In the aftermath of the violence during the prohibition era, the Congress passed the National Firearms Safety Act, which regulated automatic weapons like the Thompson Submachine Gun or the Tommy Gun. It also regulated suppressors or silencers. And these regulations have been largely upheld by our courts and also accepted by many gun enthusiasts and gun rights advocates. While we don't ban these types of firearms, we strongly regulate them, and I believe these regulations also respect Second Amendment rights. It makes it much harder to get these types of weapons, and that's what we're talking about. It's just way too easy to get these things. Without an outright ban, this is where we need to start. In order to effect change, we need to have some gun rights advocates on board and be part of this process. I'm calling on responsible Minnesota gun owners to be part of this process. These types of weapons, along with the capacity, simply make it far too easy for inexperienced shooters to create mass casualties, and they need to be regulated. In November in 1993, the federal assault weapons ban passed the US Senate in a 95-4 vote. I don't think we've had a vote that unanimous in the US Senate since Amy Klobuchar helped get that bridge passed. And frankly, it's sad, but I can't imagine the US Senate ever coming that close to anything unanimous today. But just back in 1993, they were able to do that. It passed the US House in 1994, and Presidents Ford, Carter, and Reagan all urged House members to support the bill. The ban included high-capacity magazines. The 94 federal assault weapons ban was prompted by a January 1989 mass shooting, I think I was probably in sixth grade at that time, at Cleveland Elementary School in Stockton, California. Two six-year-olds, two eight-year-olds, and a nine-year-old were killed. Twenty-nine more students and one teacher were shot. A gunman walked into the school campus, shooting while 300 first, second, and third graders were playing during their lunch period. The 24-year-old was armed with an AKS rifle, it's basically an AK-47 with a collapsible stock, fired more than 100 rounds in a minute before ultimately shooting himself. And at that time, California responded to the violent tragedy with the Assault Weapons Control Act of 1989. It was the first legislative restriction on assault weapons in our country, and it served as a model for the 94 federal assault weapons ban five years later. The Annunciation shooter that killed Fletcher and Harper and injured eighteen more children and three adults had three weapons: AR-15, a 12-gauge, and a 9mm handgun, and ten high-capacity magazines. The shooter was able to fire 116 rounds, three shotgun rounds, in less than two minutes. This absolutely has to stop. It's simply too easy for people with terrible intentions to access weapons that cause mass casualties. There has to be a way to make it harder for people to acquire these weapons while respecting our Second Amendment. We've done it before. We can absolutely do this again. And I've always held my fellow Minnesotans in a very high regard. We're a smart state. We're a reasonable state. We're a hard-working state. Right here in Stillwater, Ryan will tell you, we invented the pop-up electric toaster. We're the land of 3M, Medtronic, Prince, Bob Dylan, right? We've got many reasonable and responsible gun owners and people. I have to believe we can do something in Minnesota that can be the model for the rest of our country. It's time for a state legislature to have some reasonable conversations about these types of weapons and the capacity, and where they fit within our society. We also need to talk about education around gun ownership and gun safety, mental health resources, school safety, and anything else we can do to keep our kids safe. I'm asking to leave it all on the table and not to quit. You don't need to, we absolutely need to do this now. We owe it to our kids and our community. Thank you all so much.
Good evening, I'm Deb Simsek and I'm a kindergarten teacher here in Stillwater. Every day I get to go teach a roomful of bright-eyed, curious, innocent children who trust that our classrooms are safe for them to live in and work in, a place to learn, a place to laugh, a place to grow. But the truth is, that sense of safety has been shattered. Gun violence just doesn't make headlines, it shapes how we live, how I teach, and how we all think. It's why we practice lockdown drills with five-year-olds who should be practicing their ABCs. This is not the job I signed up for, to shield kids from bullets. But it's become our reality and it's really unacceptable. My job's supposed to be teaching kids to read and write, to be kind humans, and to love learning. Instead, we spend our time on standard response protocols drills. I look at my students crouched on the floor in a dark closet, and I think, this is not what kids in America should have to do. Last week during our first safety discussion, my class comes up with a list of animals that we could potentially pretend is what's trying to get to us. So last week, they decided it was a tiger. And one of the kids assured us tigers could not live in Minnesota, but we said, let's just pretend anyway. So we pretend there's a tiger out on the playground, so we have to stay safe in the building. And then somehow, the tiger got in the building, now we have to stay safe because he thinks kids are delicious. So that way, I can protect them just a teeny bit longer and don't have to tell them why we're really hiding, why we're really protecting, you know, what we're really practicing for. Sorry. I'm a paddleboard owner, and this will come back around. I paddleboard in Minnesota. And every other year, I have to pay a fee and I have to register my paddleboards. My husband does not have to register his guns. Minnesota knows I own three paddleboards. They have no idea our family owns guns. That needs to change. I am not a policy expert, I am not here to offer solutions, that's not my wheelhouse. My wheelhouse is loving and teaching children. But I am here as someone who deeply loves kids and believe our kids deserve better. We need our leaders to take action. This isn't about taking anybody's rights away, it is about protecting the most basic right of all, the right of every one of my kids to go home after school. The right of a teacher to do her job without fear. And the right of every family in our community to live in peace. So today, I'm asking as a parent, a teacher, a human being, for our leaders to finally act with courage. At the very least, require the same for guns that you require for me as a paddleboard owner. Because our kids need it to happen now. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Ryan Collins. I wear a lot of hats in the community. I'm a husband, I'm a father, an educator, and a council member here in Stillwater. I'm tired. But it's not because I was teaching middle school history to 12- and 13-year-olds today. I'm tired about gun violence. In my 25 years as a middle school history teacher, I've become familiar with Sandy Hook, Uvalde, Parkland, and closer to home, Red Lake, Rookory, and now Annunciation. As a parent, you send your most precious gift, your children, to school, believing they will be safe. As an educator, you report to school knowing that you have a job to do to teach children. But over the years, we now worry about the safety of children that are in our care. We worry about what if gun violence comes to our community and to our school. We practice lockdown drills, something I never imagined having to do when I was in school. That all changed with Columbine. Educators across this state are tired of this. Parents are tired of this, and students are tired of this. At what point do we, the people, demand changes? When is enough enough? When do we get more than thoughts and prayers? When an event such as Annunciation happens practically in your backyard, the time has come. What purpose do assault weapons and high-capacity magazines serve? They were made for the military. No civilian needs weapons of this style. I have no issue with people who own shotguns for hunting or for sport, but I've always felt that assault weapons do not belong in the hands of your general population. As the council member for the First Ward, I have five schools within the boundary that I represent, and no fewer than four churches. When people go to school or church, they want to not only feel safe, but they want to be safe. The safety of children in schools should never have become politicized, never. As elected officials, our job is to look out for the health, safety, and well-being of those we serve. Two weeks ago, I was teaching my students about the Constitution and the idea of compromise. After all, it was during the Constitutional Convention of 1787 that the framers needed to work together to compromise to help this nation move forward. It is time for our state legislature to do the same. It's time to work together to compromise and do what you can to help our community safe all across the great state of Minnesota. These were weapons that were created for war, not civilians. Assault weapons are designed to inflict as much damage as possible in the shortest amount of time. When the framers of the Constitution added the Second Amendment to the Bill of Rights, never would have they imagined weapons like this. In their day, if you were a highly skilled soldier, you could get off three shots in one minute. Today, that is no longer the case. At Annunciation, the shooter got off 116 rounds from an assault weapon in under two minutes, killing two students, injuring eighteen others, as well as three adults, and forever changing the lives of countless individuals. While we have a right as a society to bear arms, there are certain arms that have no place in a civilized society. To my fellow educators, thank you for doing everything you do in day in and day out to keep our students safe with the resources we currently have. Could we use additional help with school safety and mental health of our students? Absolutely. To the students who enter our classrooms every day, you mean more to us than you will ever know. You have the right to feel safe and be safe in school. I'm sorry that you have to hear stories about school shootings which increase your anxiety. I know that every time you hear someone pop a chip bag or a loud bang, your heart stops for a moment and your anxiety skyrockets. I'm sorry that you have grown up in a world where you have to hear about school shootings far too often. I'm sorry that some people are becoming numb to it. It never should have come to this. The adults who make decisions on your behalf need to do better. To my fellow elected officials, I'm talking to you legislators. President Lyndon Johnson once said, "You know, doing what is right is easy, the problem is knowing what is right." What's right are policies that will protect the children of our communities from mass shootings and mass casualty events. From 1994 to 2004, we had a federal assault weapons ban. During that time, mass shooting fatalities were 70% less likely to occur compared to the periods before and after that. It's time to work together. It's time to make compromises. It's time for common sense gun laws. It's time to ban assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. The life you might save might be that of your child, your grandchild, or a child in your community. Governor Walz and legislators, it's time to work together to make some changes to protect the children of our communities. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joan Frankel, and I am the co-lead, one of the co-leads for the Woodbury Stillwater Local Group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And today, I'm not here just as an advocate, I'm here as a mom. I have a daughter and son in college, who thankfully, never had to face the nightmare of a shooting in their school, unlike the families that faced this just a little over a month ago at Annunciation. This doesn't stop me from worrying every time I get a text from their colleges about someone with a gun on campus or a lockdown, which has happened multiple times. Gun violence is a tragic epidemic in our country. Gun violence has now become the leading cause of death for children and teenagers, more than automobile accidents and cancer. Let that sink in. More than automobile accidents and cancer. There are a wide range of ways gun violence can impact our kids, including suicide, accidental discharge of a weapon, and of course, the continued mass shootings we hear in the news. All are a tragedy for a family left with a gaping hole in their hearts. Minnesota has taken some action and has made positive strides in ending gun violence. In 2023, the legislature passed expanded background checks on all gun sales and enacted an extreme risk protection order, which allows families or police to file a petition to take away the gun from someone who poses a risk to themselves or others. But this is not enough. We know there isn't just one law that will solve this epidemic. We need to attack this cancer from multiple fronts. We know that when a shooting involves an assault weapon, the results are more deadly. These guns are designed for battlefields, not for our schools, not for our churches, not for our communities. No civilian needs a gun that can fire dozens of rounds in seconds. These weapons exist for one purpose, to kill and wound as many people as possible and as quickly as possible. We've seen what happens time and again when assault weapons are used. And we also know what happens when they're banned. Lives are saved. When the federal assault weapons ban was in place, mass shootings went down, and more importantly, the lethality of these events decreased. After it expired, they increased. We cannot afford more delay, and Minnesota feels the same way. A recent poll of Minnesotans after the Annunciation shooting found that 61% support a state-level ban on assault weapons, and 64% support banning high-capacity magazines. So what can we do? We're asking our Minnesota legislators to call a special session to ban assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. And we need all of you here today to join us in letting our legislators know this is a priority for their constituents. If you do not know who your legislators are, there's an easy way to find out. Just simply Google "Who Represents Me"? This search will bring you to the Minnesota Legislative website, where you can enter your address and quickly find all the information you need to either email or call your legislator. They need to hear from us. And then on behalf of the families reeling from the Annunciation shooting, and on behalf of every parent who lies awake at night, wondering if their child is safe, we are demanding action. Minnesota must lead and Congress must follow. Ban assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. Get these weapons of war off our streets and out of our communities. Our kids cannot wait any longer. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Otto. I'm a normal 14-year-old kid that goes to St. Croix Preparatory Academy here in Stillwater. Like all normal kids, I have big hopes and dreams for my future. I'm here today to urge Governor Walz and other legislators to pass an assault weapons and high-capacity magazine ban, since as long as I can remember, my classmates and I have to practice taking shelters from potential shooters. It feels like every week, we're reading about another tragedy in a school just like mine. Being a freshman in high school is hard enough, making new friends, the stress of schoolwork, worrying about what sports team I will make, getting my bus stop on time, and so much more. On top of that, why should I have to fear for my life every day at school? Did you when you were in school? I believe that keeping me and my classmates safe is more important than the right to own assault weapons. And if Governor Walz and others legislators truly feel the same, I urge you to take action now. I hear people say assault weapons are necessary for protection, but I ask you, how will my classmates and I be protected when these types of weapons can destroy our community in an instant? Thank you.
Thank you for gathering here today. I see many faces I recognize, and in your faces, I see the faces of the children you hold and love dearly, whether as a parent, aunt, or uncle, caregiver, teacher, mentor, friend, or neighbor. My name is Alexandra Fitzsimmons, and I'm the Senior Policy Director with Children's Defense Fund Minnesota. I'm here today as a child advocate, and I'm also here today as a Catholic and a mom of my three precious sons, and because Stillwater is our home. I fervently believe that all children have a right to childhoods that are free from fear and the threat of gun violence. All children should be able to experience the joys and wonders of childhood, learning, growing, and flourishing in communities where they feel safe and are safe. Today, we focus on two questions. One, how can we build safe communities for our children where they can play, learn, and pray without fear and without threat? And two, how can we prevent another mass shooting from ever happening again in our state? Over the last weeks, I have talked with many members of our community with connections to the Annunciation community. Annunciation is only 25 miles from here, a 35-minute drive. We have teachers whose nieces and nephews live in the Richfield neighborhood that is home to Annunciation. We have students whose cousins, friends, and teammates were at Mass that day, and who helped protect their younger classmates. We have grandparents, whose grandchildren were shot that Wednesday morning in August. We have priests and women religious and a Catholic bishop who continue to walk, suffer, and pray, and heal, with the children and parents whose childhoods were shattered while they were praying at their school mass. And we have many, many neighbors who feel connected because they care deeply about all Minnesota children. Every day, I think of the faces, the voices, and the words of the moms and the dads from the Annunciation community, who went to the Capitol a few weeks ago to talk with the Senate Working Group on Gun Violence Prevention. I think especially of Malia Kimbrel, who was a trauma therapist and the mom of two children who were at Mass that day. When she spoke, her voice was filled with sorrow and fear. Her cries and sobs were guttural. I hurt when I listened to her share the trauma, her children were living, and the terror she was living as their mom. The parents from Annunciation went to the Capitol not a year after the horrors their children experienced, not six months after, not three months after, or even a month after. They went to the Capitol in the midst of their pain and their grief. They went to plead with our lawmakers to do something now. And whose children were they advocating to protect? Our children. Our children here in Stillwater, and in Richfield, and in Fergus Falls, and in Red Lake, and in Wilmer, and in Cold Spring, and all throughout our state. They advocated for all of our children because they don't want another child, or another parent, or another community to experience the unimaginable horrors their families endured. We are called to act now, to protect our children from another mass shooting. We owe that to Fletcher, and we owe that to Harper. And we owe that to Lydia, Sophia, Pablo, Vivian, Victor, David, Estella, Astoria, and the many more children who were at Annunciation that day and who are grieving, healing, praying, and working hard to regain their childhoods. I want to tell them that our community and our state are going to do everything we can to ensure all of our children are safe in the places and spaces they love. And it is my hope that that promise with the requisite action will help them heal and regain some semblance of safety. We know assault weapons are powerful guns that can cause terrible damage to little bodies. And we know that high-capacity magazines allow a shooter to terrorize the largest number of victims at one time and in a short time. As you all know here, the shooter at Annunciation had two assault weapons and 10 large-capacity magazines. The shooter fired 116 rounds, emptying four magazines. Had the shooting continued, the shooter had 180 more rounds that could have been fired. We must do all that we can to ensure that these types of weapons and high-capacity magazines are not in our communities. I believe strongly we can make our community safe for our children, and I believe we can pass the legislation that needs to be passed. It will take two main approaches to protect our children from this type of gun violence: community awareness and involvement like we have here today in Stillwater, and legislative change. We can get this done as a state, together. And it will take all of us sitting down and talking with our family, friends, and neighbors. And when we have these conversations, they must be centered on the health and well-being of our children. Every single Every single member of the House and the Senate cares about children. Governor Walz and Lieutenant Governor Flanagan care about our state's children. Republicans, Democrats, and Independents. Legislators from the metropolitan area and legislators from greater Minnesota, they all care about children, their parents and grandparents, aunts and uncles, teachers, coaches, and parents, and their neighbors. We heard from courageous, compassionate, and committed child advocates here today: Mayor Kaczylowski, Ms. Simsek, Otto, Councilmember Collins, and Joan from Moms Demand Action. Our community's voices are clear. We will not abandon the children from Annunciation. We must urge Governor Walz and our lawmakers to listen to the people of our community and call a special session, and support a ban on assault weapons and high-capacity magazines. I urge Senator Housley, Representative Hill, Senator Seaburger, and Representative Johnson to center our children, their safety, their well-being, and their childhoods. In their discussions and their decisions, and to vote as parents, grandparents, and caregivers on behalf of the grandchildren and the children in this community. And if they feel conflicted, I urge them to close their eyes and remember the first thoughts when they heard there was a mass shooting at Annunciation Church and School. I guarantee that their first thoughts were the children. It is time. Our children are waiting on us.
That concludes our event, we thank you so much for coming and standing in solidarity with us for our children.